Assume we're okay.
It sounded like he was having issues in there earlier, but.
Yeah.
I think somebody.
We give another one.
Yeah. Okay, now call to order the September 4th, 2025, meeting of the City of Nashville Planning Board. Scott, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Let's start. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger, Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Larry Hirsch. Cameron Green.
Here.
Alderman Patricia Klee.
Here.
Great. Thank you, and we do have a quorum this evening. Okay, the first item of business for the board is approval of the minutes from the July 10th, 2025 meeting. Has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Does anyone have any comments? Anyone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman and Klee to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions?
Extentions.
Two extensions, and that motion passes. Okay, Communications. Who's doing the honor?
Nothing new to report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Report of committee and liaison. I don't think we have anybody at the City Magazine here. I don't think we have anybody else that needs to report, correct? Okay. All right. For the benefit of everyone in the audience, just before we move on to hearing our cases, I just wanted to briefly cover the procedure of the meeting this evening. So, we will hear each case in order that is presented on the agenda. The first thing that we will do is, as a board, determine whether the application that is before us is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction. Assuming that we do make that decision, we will then move into the public hearing. In the first instance, the board will hear from the applicant. After hearing from the applicant, we will take testimony from those in the audience or online, either in favor of, or opposed to, or with concern to the plan. Once we've heard the public testimony, we will then go back to the applicant for a rebuttal period, and the board will have the opportunity to ask any follow-up questions it desires of the applicant. At that point, the public hearing on the application will end. The board will go into its deliberative session, and will determine whether or not to approve the application. So, we would just ask that everyone keep their remarks as a subject at hand, and not to repeat as best as possible what's been said already. We'd like to be fair to everyone, and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and the standards outlined in the ordinance. So, I thank everyone for their attention, and I would just ask you to either turn off your cellphone or turn it on silent. Thank you.
Can you speak out louder, please?
Yes. I'll do my best. Get a little closer to the microphone. All right. So, moving on to the business of the evening. First, I just wanted to identify, there is a case, the first case that was otherwise on the agenda, A-25-0016, the Bentley Family Trust requesting a subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision at 55A Middle Dunstable Road. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we are not hearing that application this evening. So, just in case there's anyone here that was here for the purposes of that application. So, next, we have case A-25-0120, Scott D. Gingras, the Edgar A. Henry Jr. Revocable Trust, owners and applicants requesting subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment. This property is located at 456 and 458 South Main Street, Sheet A, Lots 78 and 169. It's zoned urban residential and suburban residential, and located in Ward 7. Is anyone on the board in position to make a motion that this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction? Mr. Green?
I'd like to make a motion for new business A-25-0120, with a lot line relocation, that it is, the application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction and open the public hearing.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Mr. Green. Is there a second? It's seconded by Mr. Leclerc. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer here in Nashua, 3 Congress Street, representing one of the owners, Scott Gingras. As just read into the record, we have a pretty simple lot line adjustment between, I mean, a common property line between two single-family home lots. In Nashua, I'll give you a brief overview and answer any questions you might have. We're talking about properties at 456, 458 South Main Street. The lots are located in the RAR9 zoning district. And the direct abutters are the Nashua Country Club to the west, and South Main Street to the south, Anders Lane abuts the Henry property to the east, and there's a single-family home to the north. Single-family homes across the street of South Main Street. The plan you see up on the screen this evening is what we have submitted, is really a simple relocation of a common lot line between Mr. Gingras' property and the Henry property. There was a slight kink in the property, as you can see. It got complicated by railroad tie retaining wall that was been there for many years, and both property owners thought the wall was the property line, but it really wasn't upon survey. So, they've come to a mutual agreement to straighten out the lot. It will transfer 282 square feet from the Henry property into the Gingras' property. Both lots, when complete, will comply to your zoning regulations, no impacts to the public streets. Our application has included the 190-281 Purance 52 Survey of Adjacent Parcels waiver, which is a comment to this board. So, in summary, it's a pretty simple, straightforward application, Mr. Chairman. The plan conforms to your National Land Use Code. Staff's outlined several conditions of approval that are pretty standard, are fine with us, and with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
It looks like not at this time. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to this plan? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Staff, if anything, add?
I would like to say that there is a, the owner, Mr. Gingras, owns Lot 288, I believe. That's what it says. It was my understanding that this lot would be consolidated into the entirety of Lot 169, but if that is not the case, the applicant can further clarify.
You'll notice a small triangle against Jim Petropolis along South Main Street. Mr. Gingras owns both properties. Connor, I actually think that's a glitch in the GIS system. We were good guys to show it, but from a technical survey standpoint, no, that that triangle had been brought into Mr. Gingras' land a long time ago. So, just for clarity's sake, to clean up the GIS, as the board knows, after a plan like this, we submit a CAD file to GIS Assessor. They update their maps, but that's really the story there.
Understood. We can make that resolved fairly easily.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That clarification. Any questions from the board at this point, before we close the hearing? All right. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing on this matter and move into the deliberative session. I think, as Mr. Petropolis said, pretty straightforward application. We do have the one waiver request, so I just would remind members of the board that the process is to first take a separate motion as to that waiver request before we would take a motion on approval of the application overall. So, subs, any comments that anyone has? I would ask if there's a member willing to make a motion first as to the waiver. Mr. Leclerc?
Sure. I'll make a motion on this application with respect to the waiver of 190-282B, that subdivision plan submittal requirement to waive the existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the property boundaries, and that we approve that waiver, and upon considering that, that we utilize the criteria outlined within the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. So, Mr. Leclerc has made a motion to approve the waiver from Section 190-282B9. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Mr. Leclerc, would you like to move on to your motion with regard to the the application and?
Sure. With regard to the application, I'd like to make a motion to grant final subdivision plan approval for the proposed lot line relocation for the properties at 456 and 458 South Main. Finding the application does meet the approval criteria outlined in subdivision NRO 190-138G, subsequent to the, or subject to the subsequent conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. So, again, motion by Mr. Leclerc to approve new business A-25-0120 on the basis indicated. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Klee. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have case A-25-0124, Morgan Family Investments LLC, owner and applicant, requesting subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision. This property is located at 3 Kirk Street, Sheet 61, Lot 31, zoned urban residence, and located in Ward 2. Is there a member of the board who's had an opportunity to review this application and willing to make a motion as to completeness and acceptance of jurisdiction? Mr. Green?
I'd like to make a motion for new business A-25-0124 subdivision, that it is complete and ready to take jurisdiction by this board.
Thank you. We have that motion by Mr. Green. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can you speak out? I can't hear you. You can't hear what you're saying.
Is, are there other people in the back who can hear me okay?
No.
Is it working?
All right. These people are saying they can hear me.
I don't, I'm not sure your microphone is working.
Oh, maybe the... Hello?
Can you hear me?
Testing.
The folks who are sitting in the back row.
You just said.
We were accepting the application, so we're opening the public hearing now.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, can you hear what I'm saying right now?
Yes. I just hear you right now, but I didn't hear you before, and I didn't hear what Mr. Green said about that.
Yeah.
We were opening the public hearing, so that was what we previously said.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, members of the board, I'm here tonight on behalf of Meridian Land Services representing Morgan Family Investments LLC. Tonight, I am presenting a two-lot subdivision on Kirk Street, as you had mentioned previously. We are making a pretty standard two-lot subdivision, split right down the middle. The applicant has already been to zoning, and a few variances were granted, one for reduced lot size and lot depth. That being said, after conducting our survey, we are splitting the lot right down the middle, making two equal-sized lots, just over 5,900 square feet. A few waivers that we had requested for was same as the previous, is 190-282, existing conditions within 1,000 feet. We had also asked for 190-221 to not provide underground utilities. There's already pre-existing power poles that provide overhead. We'd like to continue to use that. We also asked for 190-212 for sidewalk. Client is prepared to make a payment in lieu of that. That being said, with the lots being not conforming to the depth, we are going to have to ask for a waiver for driveway to be located within 50 feet of an intersection. And the last was to not provide a lighting plan. So, 190-275. That being said, we felt this was pretty straightforward. There is already pre-existing driveway that we're hoping to continue to use on Kirk Street. The second lot would have access off of Buker Street. That being said, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have a question, not necessarily for the applicant, but Dan Hudson, I know we, or the city had brought a concern about that 50 feet in the, or Mark Saunders had brought that up. Is there any issue with having, or granting that waiver that you guys are seeing, or was it just mentioning the the NRO statute?
My understanding is that we were just referencing the fact that it doesn't comply with a 50-foot offset. I'm not sure if Mr. Saunders was aware of the waiver request. I looked at this earlier today. I mean, there are driveways, other driveways within 50 feet of that intersection, further up the street, you know, one is is much closer. So, I don't, I don't view that closeness to the intersection to be out of character with the area. It's fairly low-volume neighborhood-type street, so I don't believe that we are taking any issue with it, as long as the proper waivers are secured.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, just, maybe I missed it, but have you had a chance to review the engineering comments? Did you, they all look okay to you, or?
Yes, we did briefly, and I know a couple were text issues, misnoting the lot number within the note, a few things of that nature. We did receive them two days ago, and we just haven't had time to touch them, just completely swamped with everyone else's. So, those will be changes absolutely made upon acceptance.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
And the above-ground utilities, is that, are you guys pushing that waiver to avoid or be able to provide power since there's no cutting of that street until 2027?
Yes, and every house, I believe, on the current streets are using overhead. So, that was our intent, to keep it there. Financially, it didn't seem reasonable to go underground at that point. So, we wish to just keep them overhead.
Anything else? Other questions from the board? Looks like that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to this plan? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Staff, if anything, to add at this point?
Nothing more to add. Pre-complete project.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from the board that we didn't get answered before we go into the deliberative session? Okay. Okay, the board will now close the public hearing on this application, and we will move into deliberative session. So, again, with this application, we have a number of waiver requests that we should handle prior to a motion on the application itself. I think we've been managing the process where we can handle all of the waiver requests in one motion, given that I know we've got a number here. But I would just ask the maker of the motion to at least speak to each of those waiver requests in the context of the motion. Mr. Green?
I will give it a shot. So, I'd like to make a motion to grant the following waivers for this project, the first, 190-282B9, to not show all existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the property lines. As, well, that'll be the first waiver. The second waiver would be 190-221C, to not provide underground utilities. 190-22, sorry, 190-212D, to make a payment in lieu of building sidewalks while there's significant need. They're providing that contribution to, based on the calculations set forth in the July 19th, 2018 Nashville City Planning Board Workshop. We'll also be granting 190-209C to locate the driveway within 50 feet of an intersection, and 190-275A to not provide a lighting plan, doing which they were using the criteria in RSA 674, 362N, and RSA 674443E, and 190-148D, to find out strict conformity, propose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waivers would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and the specific circumstances and conditions of the land indicated by the waivers will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Green. So, there is a motion to grant each of the five waivers requested. Is there a second to that motion? It's seconded by Mr. Leclerc. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes.
All right, and I will keep going for the next one. I'd like to make a motion to grant final subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision at 3 Kirk and 7 Bunker, finding the applicant meets the approval criteria outlined in subdivision NRO 190-138G, subject to the subsequent conditions noted in the staff report, A through O.
All right. So, again, motion by Mr. Green to approve new business A-25-0124 on the basis indicated. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Leclerc. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hudson?
Just that Condition B, I think we should reference that the letter was from Engineer Saunders, not Joe Mimbola. It appears that the the date is correct.
Okay.
So, I will amend my condition for subsequent Condition B in the staff report to refer, or to read all comments in the letter from...
Mark Saunders, Deputy City Engineer.
Mark Saunders, Deputy Engineer, dated September 2nd, 2025, will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Mr. Green, Mr. Leclerc, will you second that amended motion?
I'll continue to second.
All right. So, we've...
Some additional discussion, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Do we need to include this sidewalk contribution in here specifically as one of the conditions? It was, it was noted in the granting of the waiver what the amount would be, that that sort of thing, but does it belong in the conditions?
Do you want the dollar amount in the conditions as well?
Yeah, is there, I'm sorry, I'm not, is there a condition for a contribution?
Yeah, yeah, it should be updated and corrected. It should be...
Yeah, and I think, I think Mr. Hudson's asking whether it should be one of the subsequent conditions, or if it's sufficient to have it be a condition of approval of the waiver.
The latest version on the website does include that as condition.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so...
They're muffled together, actually.
Okay. As long as it's there. Am I having an earlier version, but as long as it's there?
Yeah, the C's missing, that's all. We corrected that.
All right, excellent.
Okay. So, I, I think that we can just indicate for the record that the motion made by Mr. Green and seconded by Mr. Leclerc is as to the latest staff report and the conditions there.
If you would like, we can read the condition into the record. It's very short.
That's fine.
All right.
I trust you. I trust it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, that motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda, new business site plans. We have case A-25-0121, Stellows Family Investment Properties LLC, owner and applicant, requesting site plan approval to construct four single-family detached homes on a single lot. Property is located at 2 and L Old Field Street, Sheet A, Lots 270 and 322. This is zoned urban residence and located in Ward 7. And do we, yes, we have someone from the applicant? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We need to take a, yes, sorry. We need to take a motion to accept jurisdiction.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for new business A-25-0-0121, site plan approval. It is complete and ready to take jurisdiction.
Thank you. We have that motion from Mr. Green to accept jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alderman Klee. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And that motion passes. Sorry. Please calm down.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tara Aquilina. I'm a civil engineer for SFC Engineering and representing Stellows Family Investment Properties LLC tonight. We're discussing our site development plan application for 2 and L Old Field Road, parcel A-270 and A-322, located in the urban residence district. The landowner proposes to consolidate two lots for creation of residential development consisting of four single-family homes off Old Field Road. This development on May 28th, 2024, was granted a variance by the ZBA to Article 3, Section 190-17B of Nashua zoning ordinance to exceed maximum number of principal structures allowed per lot. One permitted four single-family detached units proposed. The ZBA again evoted approval for variance on November 12th, 2024, following a rehearing. My goal today is to gain planning board approval and answer any questions or concerns anyone may have. The property consists of two lots totaling 1.55 acres, which have been in the family for years. 2 Old Field, which is parcel A-270, consisting of .46 acres, was a single-family home and historically had an in-ground pool, pool house, and a tennis court. L Old Field, parcel A-322, consists of 1.1 acres and has remained undeveloped. The properties are located at the end of Old Field Road with Daniel Webster Highway to the south and a wetland at the back, which has been delineated by a certified wetland scientist. The grade generally slopes from Old Field Road down to the wetland area. Old Field Road fronting the vacant lot is a paper street, which will remain. Neither parcel is located in the flood hazard area. Immunosubal water and sewer are available for property development, and soils are primarily windsor, which are well-drained. The project will, the proposed project will consolidate the lots to equal the 1.55 acres. The new lot will exceed their required 60 feet of frontage. Four single-family homes are proposed with a new private road access named Stellows Drive. The layout includes a 20-foot fire access with a fire truck turnaround. Each home will have a two-car attached garage in addition to room for two more cars to be parked in front of the garage without any impact to the fire truck turnaround. be parked in front of the garage without any impact to the fire truck turnaround. Utilities will include water, sewer, and gas that will connect to the existing main in the road. A new utility pole will connect overhead electric and communications to the site, then extend underground to the buildings. Work will be kept out of the 40-foot wetland buffer. Stormwater management facilities include two bio-retention areas to treat and attenuate runoff. A swale with catch basin is included to run off from the abutters across Old Field Road, and also drip strips are proposed around each home. This development meets all dimensional requirements from the zoning ordinance. The front, side, rear, and wetland setbacks are all met. The required density is exceeded with proposed 2.6 units per acre, where six is allowed, and required open space is exceeded with 62% proposed where 50% is allowed. We have two waiver requests for tonight. The first is Nashua Land Use Code Regulation 190-279EE. We request to waive the requirement to show existing conditions on adjacent parcels as appropriate. And the second is Nashua Land Use Code Regulation 190-212. We request to waive the requirement of a sidewalk located in at least one side of the street. A little timeline on this project. On June 30th, 2025, we had a pre-application meeting with the city, with a town engineer, fire marshal, and planning director reviewed the plans and gave initial comments. On July 3rd, we received a letter from Prennachuck Water stating water for the proposed project is available. And on August 29th, we just received engineering comments, which are very straightforward, and we can address them all. And also, on the 29th, the staff comments were posted, in which were consisted of a few simple comments, one being the units need to be addressed at odd numbers, 1, 3, 5, and 7, no problem. The private street will be named Stellows Drive Private Way, and the stormwater easement will be submitted to the city for new stormwater facilities. So that concludes my presentation of the site development plan for 2 and L Old Field Road. This proposed plan demonstrates the best use of land while complying with all applicable zoning and design requirements, and I believe it's a positive upgrade to the city of Nashua. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board for questions. I did have one question about your waiver for the sidewalk. And staff, just making sure I am actually looking at the most current version of the staff report, but I didn't see a proposed contribution. Is this not... Is the waiver not eligible for contrib... Is this a waiver that's not under the contribution in lieu of provision?
It is eligible for contribution in lieu. I did not display the amount of the contribution, but I believe in the staff report, I do recommend approval of the waiver.
Okay, and I guess just for the applicant then, or is the applicant agreeing to make the contribution in lieu based on the $50 per linear foot minus the driveway widths?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions from the board at this time? Mr. Leclair?
Can you just review that paper street, like where it is on the plan?
Sure.
What happens after the development? Where it ends up?
The paper street will remain. It's 100% untouched. Old Field Road, you see where it ends. It's a dark line, and then you can see our trees. Yep, that's the paper street right there that goes all the way down. That's the paper street. And Old Field ends right there.
Okay. So does a paper street not connect to any other street? It just goes further down and ends?
Right.
You're not proposing any development in that?
None.
Do we know, this is for staff, do we know what the... What's the status of that?
Of the paper street itself?
Yeah. There's time limits on them, right? And stuff like that?
No, there are no time limits. You know, essentially, it's... It remains right-of-way, but undeveloped right-of-way. And basically, there's still a viatic easement over it. This could be theoretically discontinued, at which point the right-of-way would be split between the direct abutters of that section of right-of-way. We've seen this happen before, but there's no such discontinuance proposed with this application.
Okay. So on the screen right there, the paper street is that kind of rectangle that kind of keeps going to the...
Correct.
Exactly.
Yep, it's unshaded.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Not seeing any at the moment.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to this plan? So I would just ask if there's multiple folks who would like to speak, if you would just go ahead and you can line up in front of the lectern here. And just a reminder, if anyone is speaking, if you can provide your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cliff Banner. I own the property at 459 South Main Street, on the other side of Old Field Road extension. And I've been here for about 30 years. Any other info? Is that okay?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just, again, just name and address for the record.
Okay, I appreciate the thoroughness of the paperwork that went into this. I wish we had a little bit more time to do it, but I do have a number of questions. And I would like to enter a few things in. Number one, concerning waiver number one. I think that there is probably a reason to deny waiver number one because the impact... We cannot really see much of the impact on our existing properties. For example, on chart C1, the first, I think it's C1, the very first chart behind the picture. I believe C1 is the existing property as is. Is that true? Okay, that's right. And so that's of interest because as we look at the subsequent ones, number C23 to C7, my particular interest lies in the depiction of what appears to be trees. If you go to like chart C2, trees on the top side, yes, that kind of, that area right there, I think your cursor's on it right now. There's no description about what this is and how it may be preserved, if it indicates existing trees, or if it indicates new planting or anything like that. So what I'd like to have entered onto the record, onto the charts, is a notation, and this occurs on charts C1 through C7, that this represents existing vegetation trees on the property.
I think just to clarify... Yeah, just to clarify here, I think that I believe you're referring to the same area we were just discussing that is the paper street.
Yes, it is.
Right. So it's not within, as I understand it, not within the scope of the site plan?
Well, we would like assurance that these trees that are existing will not be removed and will not be disturbed, so are covered with thick overlay that would kill the tree.
So we'll take your questions, we'll give them to the applicant, but I just wanted to identify, just so you understood that we were talking about the same area, but yes.
That's number one, and I believe that waiver one request stands in the way of giving us that assurance. Under the staff report, paragraph 3, I'll take that myself. Staff report, paragraph... Sorry, I'll take just a second to locate the staff report. Oh, here it is. Which is a general concern of the neighbors that I have talked to, is that what's said here, for example, existing single-family residents located at 2 Old Field Road will be demolished as part of the proposal, and that references a city builder meeting to approve that and accommodate it. So that's already occurred. So it gives me pause to... On confidence that other things said here are actually going to happen the way they're stated. So right now, 2 Old Field Road has been razed, and work's already begun, and yet your plan hasn't been approved. I'd like to ask the city if that was authorized. This occurs two or three times within the sets of drawings and plans here. Paragraph 5.4, in addition to the operation and maintenance plan provided, a stormwater easement shall be submitted to the city for the new stormwater facilities. Is that to be approved tonight, or has that already been done? Paragraph 5.4.
Right, so that would be... This is, as you can see, is labeled technical comments. I mean, those would be part of the conditions of an approval if it's granted.
Okay, now I'll ask it a little bit differently. After the staff comments have been enumerated and printed, has the builder remedied any of the drawings that may be affected by each of those comments?
Right, so again, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but depending on the nature of the issue, oftentimes there are technical comments with respect to the plans that they would be conditions to a approval with the understanding that the corrections would be made subsequent to the approval being granted.
So at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, given everything goes through as requested, what is the status of items like that? Is there a subsequent approval for the wastewater management, for example? That would be another question.
Right, so if it is, if, for example, there's an outstanding comment from the city that needs to be addressed, it would be, and depending on, again, the nature of the condition, it may be, you know, prior to the plan being signed, it could be prior to certificate of occupancy being issued. It depends on the conditions, but there are a number of conditions that would follow any action by this board.
I understand, Mr. Farley, but when will the public have further opportunity to comment on this?
No, not substantively.
So what happens tonight is what happens.
Correct.
So at this point...
Well, it's just not... There's not a further, you know, public airing of the subsequent conditions, but the city has the authority to take action if the conditions are not satisfied, or to refrain from taking action if there's some further step that needs to be taken before...
All right, well, since you brought that particular point up, there are three or four inspections that are occurring annually or biannually, twice a year, and who is responsible for that? Is it the engineering team, the builder? Is it the city? Who conducts those inspections? They're laid out quite nicely on the charts, but it's not evident to us because these concern really stormwater runoff in particular, but also I do have a question about the sewer condition.
Yeah, so if there's questions about, you know, it's on the plans or things like that, then I'm obviously going to have to defer to the applicant that they can respond to that question.
So if you'll help me keep track of these questions, paragraph 6.2 in the report, grant final site plan approval, subsequent conditions to be fulfilled within one year prior to signature. Again, because the 2 Old Field Road has already been razed, yet you don't have plan approval, it makes the cost... I have to pause at how accurate the statements are here. Stormwater runoff, paragraph F. I think I might be in a different... Yes, this is on the stormwater management report, stormwater runoff. Since we have the property and the... My neighbors, the Jetties, are downstream of an annual torrent that comes through from Daniel Webster Highway and back here. This is a description of acres of property as subcatchment areas. I'm not exactly sure what they are.
Sorry, can you just make sure you're talking into the microphone, because otherwise we won't get it for the record?
Of subcatchment areas, and I'm not sure if they are described in any of the plans here. But we are concerned about wastewater runoff. That brings you back again to waiver number one request, without knowing the condition of the adjacent properties, particularly the Jetties and my property. It appears that there's going to be a ring of riprap.
Sorry, again, if you could just make sure you're talking into the microphone. Just face this way, I mean, I can hear you if you're...
Sorry. So it appears that there's a large amount of riprap, which probably will come up right against their garage or right next to their garage, as well as perhaps riprap. If I can, again, that stand of trees, not knowing if they're going to be taken down or what, if those trees are going to, if there'll be riprap up there as well. But certainly on the right edge of the property, the straight vertical line, that is the edge of my property and the beginning of Jetties' property, and is, having waiver one approved would deny us the ability to, yes, that area, would deny us the ability to provide any further objections or actually just to understand the thing, because we are, since the zoning board approved the four homes in that one little area, very crowded condominiums, that gives us... We're concerned about that. The city did not accept our provided video and photos of wastewater runoff, stormwater runoff. It's certainly at least as many cubic feet per second as you ascribe. I have a feeling it's maybe double or triple that. And I just hope that the catchment plan for stormwater will take care of all that. But I, again, I'm not overly confident of that. Regarding wastewater, as opposed to stormwater, the city has commented that the minimum 2% drainage will only occur on the right-of-way and not on the property there. And I'd like to know from the engineering experts if that is adequate, or they're going to modify the plans to provide at least a 2% wastewater runoff or drain. You chose not to do 100-year flood. I'm not overly concerned about that because I've only been there 33 years, and we don't know when the next 100-year flood is going to occur. I would ask the Jetties, who have lived there longer than we have, if the video showing a tremendous amount of runoff in the spring and after heavy precipitation, was anything near a 100-year or even a 50-year runoff, or if it's just common annual runoff? Because I believe that this plan underestimates the amount of water coming off Daniel Webster and the other areas that lead to the wetlands and back of us. Map C2. Okay, that's what shows the riprap. And it appears to go, if you go to C2, you're right, it goes horizontally, that curvy line there, and then I believe it goes vertical. And how far up, does that extend all the way up to the corner?
Correct.
It does, the riprap? And so how will that appear to our, to the neighbor there? And is there any further riprap? I guess the riprap also goes across the top of the new lot line. Is that correct?
So this line is the, the sold stock, it'll be installed?
Yeah. Okay. So that completely encircles the combined lots, correct?
Yeah, again, once everyone's had the opportunity to testify, then we'll go back to the applicant, so just.
I'm trying to get through this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just pointing out that there's no riprap shown on C2. There's a proposed tree line called out, but I don't see it.
I do see a tree line, but I see a curvy bubbling type line on the, in the middle of the chart.
I believe that's a proposed tree line, so there's an existing tree line, and then the trees, some trees will be cut, and there's a proposed tree line. So I don't believe any of that, I mean, I just go back to legend of the plans, but I don't believe any of that depiction is representing riprap.
Okay, then I'd like clarification on where the riprap will be. The engineer, thank you, I forgot your name. Tara, you described the fire truck turnaround, still allowing two cars to be parked.
Again, sorry, just, you have to direct the questions to us. We will then, at the end.
Oh, okay, I thought you were not hearing my.
No, sorry, so you're going to have a chance to, and then other people will have a chance to come up and ask questions or express concerns.
Yeah, apologize.
And then at the end of all of that, we'll go back to the applicant, and she will have the opportunity to address any of those concerns.
I misunderstood what you wanted to say.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Okay, so I guess my last comment is, so if we have two cars parked in every driveway, I do have one more comment beyond that. Then the fire truck does, is not interfered with at all coming in. That's my understanding. I'd like that verified by just assent of the engineering team. And finally, as, these are independent residences, but somehow part of a condominium. As the city describes it as condominium, the builder describes it as residences, single-family It appears there are no particular lot lines associated. From a trespassing perspective, will the owner of the lot, 135, of house number seven, Stello's, be trespassing, or be necessarily trespassing on lot five or three, the other ones? That's a curiosity factor only, and I guess the association that is to be formed eventually as condominium association will have to figure that out.
Right, and just this form here where you've got a single lot, but multiple detached units, it's not uncommon. It is usually either condo association or homeowners association.
Right, okay.
But I'll ask the applicant to speak to what the form is.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the time here, and turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you.
I'll leave the paperwork up here if anybody wants to use it.
Linda Banner, 459 South Main Street. My question is on the size of the lot that was undeveloped. When you eliminate half of it for wetlands, for water and for wetlands, are you still claiming that that's a 2.6 residency or development? Or are you scrunching in a whole lot of house in a smaller area, but you're still claiming it as 1.1 acre or whatever that you said? Because you can't build on the water, and you shouldn't be building on the wetlands. Okay? The other thing I have a question about is, you're building a retaining wall that, I think it said 4.5 feet tall. I think you're going from 160 to 165, so I think you're going to need a five-foot, at least a five-foot wall. Okay? I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but that just sounds logical to me. The other thing, there's a gas line that is probably not obvious, that goes from the paper road to our cabana. So just please don't explode my cabana when you're working there. Have you folks seen this property?
I'm sorry, are you asking the board members?
I'm asking the five of you. Have you seen this property?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to speak for the other board members, but I'm familiar with the property, yes.
Okay. As I said at the other meeting for variance, where skunk cabbage grows, it's telling you something. Do not build here. And just because you can doesn't mean that you should. That's it.
Other folks?
Don Jettie, 459 and a half, South Main Street. I pretty much, I'm looking at sheet C4. If you can bring that up. Now, in the top right corner, you've got, you're showing the catch basin. Can you zoom in on that? What is that shape? I understand the sewer for the catch basin, but what is that shape all about?
I, sorry, so.
Is that a downgrade to the catch basin, to the sewer? And what is also, what is that line, 164?
Right, again, if you could just kind of generally reference, we'll have the applicant address that.
Okay.
Right, I'm not entirely sure, maybe you could, you could be a bit more specific with your question?
Okay, well, I'm kind of concerned about the grade at where you see the bushes to the right of that, the row of bushes along the retaining wall. And I'm wondering where that grade is going to be. Are they filling that up? They bringing that grade up? They leaving it level where it is? That kind of thing.
Okay, well, again, put that question to the applicant when we get there.
I believe that that's all I have at this point.
Okay.
We're concerned with the runoff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Farley, is there a gentleman on?
Sorry, yeah, well, yeah, I just want to make sure first, I will go to the Zoom, but is there anyone else sitting here in the room who hasn't had a chance to speak who would like to? Okay. All right, so not seeing anyone, I will now go to Zoom to see if there's anyone on Zoom who is interested in speaking as opposition or concerned of the plan.
We're checking to see if anyone is on.
Okay.
But we do not see anyone.
I'm not seeing anyone either, but. Okay. All right, well, not seeing anyone on Zoom, I will go ahead and give the applicant now a chance to address the questions, concerns that were just raised by the abutters. And just for your benefit, and I'm sure you were taking notes as well, but issues identified were the status of the trees, vegetations in the Paper Street area, I think generally some questions, concerns about stormwater management, drainage, related question about wastewater, not entirely sure, addressing whether there's, if there's riprap and where it is, the ability of the fire engine turnaround to operate if, you know, there's full, if all the cars that are, can be parked there are parked there, lot size conformity, retaining wall height, and then the, what I understood to be, sort of the grade of the drainage feature in the top right of the plan. I think that covered everything, so.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for your concerns. So I'll start with the first one, with the waiver. I feel that our, we show all the existing conditions, substantially show the existing conditions around the property. The tree line that he speaks of is going to remain. It shows on the existing conditions plan, but it also shows on our proposed development, and it remains there on our C4. It's, we are, again, touching nothing in the Paper Street, so all of those trees, as they are today, will remain. His second question was demolition, that has been approved by the city. Stormwater was a big concern, as we heard that at the zoning, and we did take that seriously when we did our stormwater design, because that is a true concern of the abutters and of course ourselves. We went above and beyond when we modeled our stormwater. We took into account all of the water runoff coming from across the highway, on the highway, and the abutters across the street, and also our own property. So I feel very confident in our stormwater design. Yes, the 2% sewer line, we will amend that on our plan. That was an engineering comment, actually. The riprap, as they stated, and Dan stated, is just at the bottom, what they thought was riprap is trees. It's solely trees. The water that comes off of the neighboring properties is pitched towards the back of our property, so nothing will be going from ours onto theirs. They are all upstream of this lot, combined lots. The fire truck turnaround, as we spoke about, that, it complies with exactly the fire truck that they use here in Nashua, and all of those four residents can have two cars parked in the driveway, and that truck will turn around. So that should not be a concern. He spoke of the condo documents, that is a condition that will follow the approval today, that we will address. Let's see, the size of the lot, she spoke about, Mrs. Banner, we took in consideration when we did open space, you have to take away 50% of the wetland, we still exceed it, but we have 62% where 50% is required. So that is a size lot that you could build on, it is not too small. The retaining wall she speaks of is, yes, four and a half feet high. She read the plans right. And then finally, was the last gentleman was talking about the catch basin, that it's all to do with drainage, has nothing to do with sewer. It's all the way to the east side of the property. We propose a swale which will catch all the off-site flow and divert it to that catch basin, and then it's piped to the wetland. So again, taking into consideration all of the off-site water we have, we have, you know, modeled. And I think I got all the comments. Am I missing any?
Yeah, and I think maybe just for the sake of clarification, because obviously the existing conditions waiver is one we see quite frequently and grant quite frequently, I think maybe there was a conflating of two different things. So just to clarify, that, as I think you indicated, the stormwater management plan is broader, it's, you know, the existing conditions is not, is not delimiting the stormwater management plan that you've felt, right?
Right.
Yep. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Hudson?
Not so much questions, but additional clarification. So generally onsite designs, there's a, you know, a blanket stormwater easement that the development enters into that just basically gives the city the right to enter the property if they don't maintain their stuff, that sort of thing. But then there's usually a maintenance plan, so any stormwater treatment devices that are on site, they're required to develop a maintenance plan, they're required to do annual inspections, maybe even bi-annual inspections of the various devices, and submit that. Those inspection reports are at least certified that those have been done to planning. So that's, it's not the city's engineering department that will go out, but those reports, I believe, will go to planning, and then if they're not in compliance with submitting their certifications or reports, planning can follow up and seek remedy on that. So, I mean, again, they're desired to, they're required to design these things, develop a maintenance and management plan, and then annually report on that. So that's kind of the mechanism of how all the onsite treatment stuff works.
Correct.
So hopefully that provides some additional clarification to some of the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Claire?
Yeah, I just want to clarify too, just because there seemed to be some concern about development outside of the property line of the lot, you know, which is the Paper Street, right, and other places like that. And just clarifying for the folks in the audience, and there is no right of the developer to make any changes outside of the property line.
Correct.
Unless they are delineated on the plan. So the lack of information outside the property line doesn't mean they can do something out there, it means they can't do anything out there. The only way there would be off-site development allowed is if it's actually shown on the plan to be done. So just to clarify and make people understand there isn't, this plan doesn't allow any work that I can see outside of the property line, so.
Right.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, there is, there is a note on the plan in that area that says grade area to swale. I'm assuming that, you know, it's part, that they just need to make sure that the water in that area, as was described, is coming from uphill that can get routed across, kind of across the frontage of their property to that catch basin. So, you know, work in the right-of-way can be done, but only with permission from the city, so that would be through permitting that Public Works would grant. I mean, they have a couple utility titans to make in the right-of-way, so things can happen, but as Mr. O'Clare noted, there can be no permanent structures or anything like that constructed without city's approval. Unfortunately, it appears there are some existing encroachments, actually, from a neighboring property into that, into that Paper Street offense or whatnot. So not currently interfering on anything the city's doing, so I don't know, you know, unless that's an immediate issue we need to take up, but that is right. I mean, activities can occur, but they need to be permitted by the city. The city probably pushes snow to the end of this, at least a portion that we maintain, so imagine in the winter there's a snow pile there, and that would continue to occur. So I just wanted to know those things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other questions for the applicant? Heather McLean?
Thank you. It's not so much a question, just a comment. I know that they, the, there were some concerns that one of the speakers talked about, that there's a lot of runoff and so on towards their home and so on, and I wasn't quite clear. their home and so on, and I wasn't quite clear if this comes from your property or the property that's being concerned and so on, so I agree that you seem to be doing a lot of work and so on. Would any, any of the work that you're doing, I saw that you said no, that you don't believe that any of your, any of that water is coming through your property and so on, but do you believe any of the work that you're doing will be helping them in any way to mitigate any of their runoff that's coming towards them?
Yeah, all, all, they're all, all of their properties slope towards our property.
Okay.
So nothing that we do.
Nothing you're doing affects them, yeah.
Exactly, we're just mitigating the water that, their concern was the water in the back, not their water coming onto our property, but just saying that if there is a lot of water back there, make sure you, you know, pay attention to it, in which we have, but no water on our property is going that way, it's uphill.
So can't go uphill?
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Hudson?
Just a question for staff, I mean, it doesn't appear there was any encroachment into the wetland buffer, therefore, assuming there was no, no appearance before the Conservation Commission or anything like that, so many, in previous cases where properties are built right up to the wetland buffer, you know, we worry about future encroachments into the buffer, I, there is no provisions that I see for delineating that buffer or anything like that, I just, that's the only aspect of the plan that worries me, it is a tight property, and I don't want people that live there to think that they can go into that, you know, or they can go into it, but they, not that they can clear vegetation in the buffer without those approvals, so I don't know whether that will be addressed, maybe it's addressed adequately on the plans, just in notes, and/or maybe that needs to be referenced in the condo documents when those get established, but that is a concern of mine for future, future potential issues as a result of this construction.
Maybe, I don't know, if the applicant, if you want to address, is it, is there any note on the plan, or is there otherwise an intention to incorporate that into the condo documents?
I think it would be a great idea to incorporate in the condo docs, because that's still the next step, but yet, we pulled all of those properties back from the buffer so to make sure they're not right on the buffer, and all the trees need to remain, so whoever does buy these properties, it should be in their condo docs that everything needs to remain, be remain, like the trees, anything in the buffer needs to be untouched.
We would have the opportunity to add a condition, as the boards are aware, we do have wetland signs that are typically mounted on a post, and we could work with the applicant to establish locations on the plan set of where those would be established, typically they're done, I think, Scott, every 50 feet or so, and that's, that's a condition that we could, we could add to the plan, so that's.
That's actually required, yeah, that's required.
So, we would welcome that as an additional subsequent condition.
Okay. Any other questions this time? Alderman Cleese?
Just for clarification, we're going to add that as a subsequent condition?
I think that's what Sam was suggesting, yeah.
So what we're doing are, we're putting it as a subsequent condition, thank you.
Yeah, just signage for the buffer, inappropriate indications on the plan, I guess. Okay, I think, I think we're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just to confirm, no other questions for staff or anyone else while we're in the hearing? Okay. All right, in that case, we will now close the public hearing on this application and move into our deliberative session. So, as the applicant indicated, there are, there are two waivers being requested here. I understand that one of the abutters expressed some concerns about the existing conditions waiver, but again, I think we've, we've addressed that in terms of the discussions with, with the applicant and, you know, the explanations around the notes on the plan and/or back thereof, and then there's also a waiver with respect to the sidewalk requirement with a contribution in lieu, which I think we should just probably add into the, the motion on, on any approval of that waiver, since it's not currently in the staff report. Otherwise, I mean, from my perspective, I think that the, I appreciate that it's, that it is a, you know, a smaller lot, but, you know, the applicant has, has obviously met all the requirements for, you know, lot sizing, they, they got the necessary relief from the zoning board, I think they've, they've done a good job in terms of the design, et cetera, from my perspective, so I think, I think this is a, is a, is a good application, but I certainly would like to hear from the other board members, any questions or concerns or comments anyone has.
Just, you know, condition H does speak to the contribution, doesn't specify an amount, it's as if chosen by the applicant, you know, I suppose.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I agree, I don't know that we necessarily, we should probably reference the standard, you know, there's the, in the prior application, we had the reference to, I don't know, was it July 2018 meeting or something, but it's the, you know, the $50 per linear foot minus the driveway width, so we should probably just.
For my, for my interest, is that for the entire frontage of both properties along the accepted street and Paper Street, or is that just the portion along the accepted portion of the street?
My interpretation was just along the existing road of Oldfield.
Minus that roadway entry with there?
Correct. Okay.
And the condition, the suggested condition adding about the, you know, delineation of the wetland buffer, maybe that would be just referenced in, to the satisfaction of planning department, and they can work together on that, I mean, I'm not sure 50-foot spacing necessarily is appropriate with some of the house locations, but some strategically placed wetland buffer markers would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. All right, so in the, in the first place, is there someone who's willing to make a motion as to the two waiver requests?
I will do my best.
Mr. Green?
I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion for new business A25-012 site plan approval to grant the following waivers that were, or requested in the letter dated August 28th, 2025. First, the first waiver would be 190-273EE to waive the requirements showing existing, existing conditions on adjacent, adjacent partials as appropriate, as well as granting a waiver for 190-212 to waive the requirement that a sidewalk be located at least one side of the street. As long as, in the subsequent conditions, it is noted that the applicant was willing to provide a sidewalk contribution per the standards laid out in, per the standards laid out by the planning department. These, we are granting these waivers, waiver requests utilizing the criteria from RSA 67436 to N, RSA 674443E, and 190-148D, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waivers would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations and specify, and the specific circumstances and condition of the land indicate that the waivers will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations using the rationale provided in the applicant's waiver request letter dated August 28th, 2025.
Thank you, so we have that motion by Mr. Green to, to approve the waivers with respect to new business A25-0121. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Cleese. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes.
I would then like to motion, make a motion to grant final site plan approval for the four-unit, single-family, detached condominium development for properties located at 2 and L Oldfield Road, finding that the application meets the approval criteria outlined in subdivision NRO 190-146D, subject to the following conditions listed in the staff report A through M and editing condition H to read prior to the issuance of the building permit, a contribution in lieu of the construction of the sidewalk will be given by the applicant per the standards given by the planning division, the city planning division.
And then we were going to add the, the new condition, I think?
Right.
And the new condition, yeah, and then adding a new condition in.
The wetland buffer.
Yeah, in, with the wetland buffer markers added to the satisfaction of the planning department, be added to the site plan before, or prior to issuance of the building permit?
And I have another request, I don't think the engineering letter is referenced, so I would, I would seek a condition to, that the engineering comments per the August 29th letter, 2025 letter from Joe Mandola, senior staff engineer, be addressed to the satisfaction of the public works division.
Okay, yeah, just, you're saying that's not, that's not, you're using the condition right now?
It's on the list, yeah. At least I didn't see it.
So, I might have to do this again, but clarification, all the technical review comments with that in section five of the letter, I think is more than environmental permit, okay. We can give this one more shot and start from, start from the top. I'm going to grant a motion to, I'd like to make a motion, grant final site plan approval for the four-unit, single-family, detached condominium development at 2 and L Oldfield Road, finding that the approval criteria outlined in NRO 190-146D meets the, yeah, meets the criteria following the subsequent conditions, A through M noted in the staff report, amending H to read prior to the issue, issuance of the building permit, contribution in lieu of the construction of the sidewalk be given by, by the applicant per, per the standards laid out by the planning department, adding subsequent condition N to include, prior to issuance of the building permit, to include wetland buffer markers added into the plan to the satisfaction of the planning department, and then add a subsequent condition O, referring to the August 29th, 2025 engineering letter from Joe Mandola, senior engineer?
Senior staff engineer.
Senior staff engineer, to be met to the satisfaction of the department.
Division of Public Works.
Division of Public Works, prior to this signing of the plan.
Excellent, all right, thank you, Mr. Green, so we have a motion by Mr. Green to approve new business A25-0121, as indicated, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Hudson, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Mr. Chair, can I just say one more thing about this case, just for public's benefit?
Yes.
There was some discussion about, will there be another public hearing, there won't be another public hearing, but as these plans evolve, these are all public documents, so you can reach out to staff and find out what the status of the approval process is, request them, you know, final plan, once what's done, final plans will also be recorded to registry, but, you know, I would say, I would just encourage you, if you have a concern, some detail you want to follow through the rest of the process, feel free to reach out to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, welcome. Moving on to other business, first item of other businesses, review of the tentative agenda to determine if there's any proposals of regional impact. Mr. Leclerc?
Yeah, just to make a motion, having reviewed the tentative agenda, that there are no current proposals with expected regional impact.
Thank you, so motion by Mr. Leclerc, that there are no proposals of regional impact, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Hudson, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, and then, other business, item number two, we have a referral from the Board of Aldermen for a petition for street discontinuance for major drive and a portion of Spalding Street, and Sam, I suppose you're speaking to this?
Sure, happy to. So this is associated with the Maynard Homes redevelopment, as you may recall, in that site plan, they would be kind of realigning the existing streets that are in that development as they go through the phases of redevelopment of that site, so as such, they need to discontinue the private streets that already exist, so that they can demolish and then rebuild, and I believe the streets will actually then be private within that development, so naturally we would have to discontinue those, and we're going through the automatic process to do that, so we'd be seeking a favorable recommendation from the board. I will also add that the discontinuance, there's multiple things occurring at the same time, we're negotiating a master development agreement with the applicant, currently this, you know, funding and all sorts of other loose ends that need to be tied up, so this discontinuance would not fully be acted on until we're absolutely certain that the development is indeed moving forward.
Mr. Hudson?
And maybe a question for staff, but I should, I should know the answer, but I'm assuming that this is similar to street acceptance, where there'll be a public hearing scheduled, and.
Yes.
So this won't be the only forum for people to provide input, obviously, there'll be a public forum, public hearing, and then there'll be a Board of Aldermen meetings as well, where this can be discussed.
The infrastructure committee holds the formal public hearing.
Yeah.
I think there's a public hearing already scheduled, I'm not sure what the date is, but I believe it's already scheduled.
I believe you're right.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yeah, if there aren't any other comments, I'll make a motion on this, other business, petition for street continuance, discontinuance for major drive and a portion of Spalding Street, that the planning board provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc, so motion by Mr. Leclerc to make a favorable recommendation as to the referral from the Board of Aldermen, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Hudson, any further discussion?
I just have one quick question, and, and Sam, maybe you can answer this, is there ever a reason not to do something like this, to play devil's advocate, would there ever be a reason not to, I can't see it, I can only see being in favor of doing something like this, but just to play devil's advocate.
We would not want to discontinue a road without any, a high level of certainty that the development was moving forward, say, we discontinued it, and then the development did not move forward, well, we just abandoned the biatic use of the public over the existing roadway, we'd go through a process to reestablish it, but just legwork that otherwise we wouldn't want to have to put ourselves through.
So at this point, we just, this particular body is just saying that we're in favor of it, if it ever were to happen, I would say it lies within the Board of Aldermen to, to actually do the approval process of it, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion seconded.
More discussion.
Mr. Hudson?
Along those lines, like there is public sewer currently in, in the streets, and so, you know, this, but there's provisions planned for, for all this via easements and things, so this is a little unique versus some others, I know, I know there's at least one other proposed discontinuance that I don't believe, I believe was not taken up, because the city didn't believe that we still had any retained rights to that right of way, so there's unique situations, but this one, this one's all part of a master plan that's. So there's unique situations, but this one, this one's all part of a master plan that's well, well under development, so I think it makes sense to support this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I'll call the motion if there's no, no more further discussion? All right, so we have a motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Who seconded the motion?
Dan did.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for our formal business. Any discussion items? All right. Take a motion to adjourn in that case.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Cleese. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and we adjourned at 8:30. On the dot.